Mr. Chairman, thank you for your patience. Councilwoman Luther Smith is not able to hear us through the system, but we can hear her. So what I want to do is keep her on my cellphone so she can hear us. If she wants to speak, then she can unmute herself and talk to us.
Okay, I guess I think if you know what she wants to read.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll proceed when we have your consent.
Yes, sir. I'm ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call those Orangeburg County Council Meeting of March 17, 2025 to order. We're going to ask Councilman Joseph Garvey to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed.
That's all our is. Our most gracious Father, we come thanking you for all you made a blessing. We come thanking you for all that you've done and all that you've done. Blessed that you be with us and like to supervise us as we work in this meeting, Father God. Let us make the best decision that we possibly can for the extension that we represent. Father God, blessed that you bless the ones who have gone through hurricanes all over this land. Blessed that you blessed us in the United States of America, here soon, may you be great. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Garvey. I hope each councilperson has had the opportunity to look at the minutes of the March 3 meeting. If anything needs to be changed, I can let those minutes be received as a...
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Move by Mrs. Counselor and second by Ms. Walker that the minutes of the March 3 meeting be received as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and no one's here. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meetings. And for those of you who may not have attended any of our meetings before, we have public comments at the beginning of our meetings. We have it in two sections. We have public comments of agenda items, and then we have public comments of other matters. If you want to comment on an agenda item and that agenda item have a public hearing, you wait until we get into that, just like I don't want, before you comment on their agenda then. If you not have that, now before a public hearing of agenda items, you approach before you engineer them and make your comments. You have three minutes. We would appreciate you... We appreciate you going along with what we have. You have three minutes to address the comments that you would like to. And once you are up there, please make sure you pronounce your names for the clerks for the record. And then let me finish that when we're going to public comments. For other matters that mean anything that you want to bring before council at that time, you can come up and address the comment matter. And as comments, we don't have a doubt... But... Here now, we will close that portion of it before we go to public comments of other matters.
Pastor Hayes, may I adhere to raise to this board of an event that's coming up? It is a nonviolent summit. A thing for action, this conference is a nonviolent summit. And people from all over the country will be attending. Los Angeles, Vegas, Chicago, and New York. They all come because this thing of violence affects every aspect of our community. And we're trying to be certain that we find ways to help the chief of police and sheriffs and district people to combat this issue that affects all of our areas of interest, just like schools and other parts of our community. And so this is not a one-time thing. We will be transparent to see how effective we've been. We'll be learning and growing from people outside of communities who have shared what we're doing to help inside this community. So I'm asking for your support as you continue to... As we continue to look forward with great expectations. And I'm just asking that if you have any discretionary fund that we appreciate, whatever you give, thank you.
Thank you, Robin Gaddy. We appreciate it. You said from the first, April the 1st to the 3rd?
No, April the 3rd.
Or the 3rd to the 5th?
April 3rd to the 5th.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, thank you. You all have a blessed evening.
I want you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Howard Free, resident of Orangeburg. I live on 141 Dr. Lane, that's for South Carolina. I've had flooding issues for 10 years. I recently put in a complaint. I hadn't heard anything else back. Looked at my face when I walked through the county. You know, I look like I've known the secretaries for the last 10 years as he moved. Thousand dollars. Transition, my truck now is messed up. I filed a complaint at the county, did not get a phone call back. To walk my boots to walk home. The neighborhood property has been modified over years. It's a bridge company right on Bowden Highway. You see all steel on the side of the road. He's got a lot of unpermitted things that are going on. He's adding structures right now to the building. It creates excessive runoff. I complained to D Head. I complained to the state. The guy from the state did go in there and talk to him, and he did take out some of his culvers. He had a culvert system. I can show you. I've been tracking those pictures for the last 10 years on this issue. I've been upstairs in this building. I've talked to too many people. Too many people that still got jobs that have never done anything about this issue. This is really ridiculous. Like yesterday, if I went to church yesterday, I couldn't wait long. This has been going on for 10 years. And I need somebody to move forward with this. I should have to sue the county and sue the bridge company and do something that's people's job. Like I say, he's doing a lot of unpermitted work. He's got farmland attached to his commercial property. When I called the tax people, they said he can store the steel on his farmland. He's driving tractor trailers up the dirt roads and tearing up roads. I said, well, that's fine, okay. But he's using farmland for commercial use, and then he's got drainage systems in there that's flooding the state ditch. The state points to the county because the state ditch floods the county road because we can't handle the water. The last three months, he's built up the property and brought in all his crushed rock. So the rain yesterday flooded even more. It was a big acre of rain over there that flooded. It floods the road. Next time I come in here, I will be back in two weeks. Wait I can bring pictures and show you so you can get a better understanding of what's going on. But like I say, my wife could not go to work this morning. The roads just come down. I've been down here, but it's been three days. My wife can choose to stay at home or choose to leave my home for three days. And go stay somewhere else as the water goes down. And there's too many people that know about this. Like I say, I go up to the road maintenance all the time. I try to wait about every six months and go up there and talk to them. They know my face. They have the secretary right now. She can tell you my name, and she'll know what's going on. She probably got the pictures right there that I showed. Thank you for this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Howard Free.
Howard.
Free, yeah. I've been online and put it in the plan and online before we start with that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm at the belt Kenny. I came a couple months ago to mention the issue with there's a road. We had flooding back in November, and our road was completely destroyed. It's still not passable either way, coming or going. I have to drive through our neighbor's private property in order to get out. How is something that's going to be done? Nothing has happened since then. I've called the county, and every time I call, they say they haven't heard anything. They don't know if anything's going to be done anytime soon. It's getting worse and worse, and we're still trying to drive through our neighbor's property. His property is getting damaged. My car is not a four-wheel-drive car. My shock and suspension are about shot because I'm driving through the woods partially to get out. I can't afford to get this fixed, and it's becoming more and more damaged. He was outside today, and he should color my neighbor filling in pop holes in his property. Now his path he goes now because me and my neighbors are having to drive through this property to get in and out to the main road. And I just want to know if something's being done or there's a plan to get anything done because every time I call to contact anybody, they can't give me any kind of idea if anything is going to be done or when it's going to be done.
There's a plan. The Minister?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Have we tried to work on something with this unfair view of the road? And before you got to fishing, you had Kelvin and all that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on Friday, and Kelvin Gack, who's the consultant, has been working with us to help us with that, presented a proposal to us on Friday that we worked on this week. We met with FEMA also, which was the holdup because FEMA was the one that had to tell us what we could do and be reimbursed for. And really scary, we met with them on Friday as well. So we have a meeting this week upcoming to look at the proposal. And also, there should be some update that goes out to the landlords that we've been working with sometime this week.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just be patient. I know it's easy to say that and accept the position and all, but just want to let you know that we're not trying to do.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And what else?
Mr. Chairman, that relationship with Mr. Free, this first I've heard hearing that with Mr. Summers, but I will check with Mr. Summers tomorrow, and we'll be able to get back with him to find out the solution of what's going on over there.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair, are you talking about roads in general or are you talking about general questions and concerns from people around the county? I'm sorry I got here late.
No, we... If you've got an issue, you can let... You still have comments section. You state your name and say you've got an issue. You know, there's enough issue to go around with this kind of a large county. And, you know, we've got a lot of dirt roads, and the lives probably move on these streets. So we have those a lot of adverse waters like that. I mean, we have issues with that.
Yes, sir.
Engineer name and nothing much.
Yes, sir. John Gathers, I am director for South Carolina Small City Department of your South Carolina State. A few months ago, I was in here when a construction company was presenting a fund council. And they were presenting it away, and I didn't think it was necessarily fair to a small local contractor. So I get calls every day about why they're a company out of Tennessee doing work in Orangeburg, why they're a company out of North Carolina doing work in Orangeburg, or why can't companies from Orangeburg get work. So what we did, we worked with Eric Tobler, who's the Charleston County Purment Director. We worked with the Purment Director here. Hadn't got a chance to present for the administrative because he was out sick. But we've come together with a small local business program that we want to propose for Orangeburg County to make sure that it doesn't really matter who comes in, Orangeburg County does it work. They got to look at the contractors from this county and surrounding counties first before they bring in outside supporters. You've got to help up build and pace the smaller contractors here in the county. So I'm not sure who I need to put that in front of, what committee I need to talk in front of, but I would like to get some time to present it, and I promise you three minutes and it's a lot of information.
No, that would probably be something that we put in a committee. We have the appropriate committee. I will have staff and whatever. We're talking committee. Please put that in. The committee and...
Yes, sir.
I don't know exactly which committee at this time. The Minister pretty far on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think that would be the administrative committee.
Hold on, this administrator.
That was something that some of us, or three of us were working on. And I remember the young man at Napolea well. But we were talking about local businesses, local businesses being hired or being a part of the construction, building constructions for a life or a cause of concern. I was on that committee, and I think it was Lawrence Frazier. I don't know the third person. I can't remember the third person.
All right, well, Mr. Gathers, they will...
Not yet another committee, but I remember him.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, that's... They will follow up when they have a committee meeting.
I'm not the chair. I forgot who was on that committee, but I'm not the chair. But I've talked with John, and I asked him to please come. Let's go for Smith, Mr. Chairman.
It's cool with Smith.
She is prepared.
All right, well, they'll be with you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe they got it, they follow.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. Here now, we'll close the public comments section of our meeting. And we're going to our regular meeting. First item on the regular meeting is an audit, third reading, and public hearing. And this is an audit authorizing Orangeburg to enter into a lease agreement regarding a portion of the Orangeburg County Alcoa Building, pursuant to which Orangeburg County shall be the landlord and some of our documents shall be the tenant. I'll give the Minister to give a summary for the public on this either for the public hearing and after public hearing, I mean. Technical problem there, Mr. Minister.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. Y'all, can you hear us?
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead. If it's not clear, I mean, I can read the background.
Okay. All right. All right, yeah. This is 1,206 square feet of rental space that the advertiser building at 1550 Henley, and it will be in monthly installments of $864.25.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. If you've heard the summary of it, not full of public hearing, if anybody has any comments on that. All right. If not, I would appreciate those from the 7th to 30th, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Second. By Mr. Garvey, second by Lawrence Frazier, that we have 30th, final reading on item one. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, and no one's here. Second on the agenda is the second reading. This is for the... Sure, there's a request from Michelle Jamison, who owns a property at 1287 Campus Drive in Orangeburg. Dash number 0173-1201-007, residential general district to commercial general district. Mr. Minister, please give us a summary on that. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Planning permission now on February 12, 2025, to discuss the recommendation from Ms. Jamison. It's only 1287 Campus Drive, and it's for residential general to commercial general for the purpose of running a business with food trucks and bars. There were three citizens that expressed their support, zero citizens with opposition. Planning permission presents this to you with a 50-year old approval.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. There any questions from any councilperson? I did a motion on the second.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Second. By Lawrence Frazier, second by Ms. Walker, that we do second reading on item two and described by the Minister, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, and no one's here. Third item is an audit for first reading, and this is by title only. And this is an audit for restricted parking in residential single-family zones in the unincorporated portion of Orangeburg County where D Head holds capacity greater than two tons used for commercials, industrial, or construction purposes, provided for violation and penalties and other related matters. Since it's by title only, Mr. Minister, usually we can tell we get second reading to give the full description, right?
Stand by, Mr. Chair.
Usually when it's by title only, that means we create a tell of second reading to give the full description of what's being pointed to. But I mean, it's...
Yes, sir. This is the...
Yes, sir.
Usually when it's by title only, that means we create a tell of second reading to give the full description of what's being pointed to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the ordinance that we're putting in place to help curb the parking of commercial vehicles in residential areas. And the rest of the ordinance will be forthcoming, but the purpose of the ordinance is for the complaints that we have received from a lot of the communities about eighteen wheelers parking in the residential neighborhoods. And this would help give us the ability to take it and find those individuals to help give the citizens some reason.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Comment question?
Question?
Right, question, Mr. Rennett?
My question is this, Mr. Minister, we have a residence in place already that have any covenant, the description for a vehicle of such. Who's supposed to enforce that sheriff's department of who?
How it's being written? It's written so that code enforcement shares officers will be responsible for that.
But I'm... You heard what I said, huh? Some of the residents that have a code covenant. But I know this is that issue. That's great.
Yeah, but... The restricted covenants of a neighborhood are called by the county. But this ordinance would be...
I vote it that way.
What about the current one that they have in place already?
The current one is under planning and zoning. That's why I did this with penalties and violations so that the sheriff's office and code enforcement will be able to pick this one up.
As we will build?
No, we don't focus on this one. Because we don't have anyone under zoning who can do penalties right now. So we're doing this so that enforcement can be through the sheriff's office and code enforcement. It's citations.
That's great, but I still... Of course, it still arrives how we enforce one authority in place.
We can't. We don't have anyone current to...
I'm saying that, but that would have sheriff's department have to do it. I understand this is a separate covenant, other than one in place already.
It's the same, but it's separate, only because we don't have people to do enforcement with. So we had to do it this way so that we can have the sheriff's office and code enforcement to fight the violations.
And those will be incorporated as well?
It will be incorporated should someone be hired to code enforcement to fight the citations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cooper's passed the question.
Yes, ma'am.
This has been a problem ever since I've been on council. People have been complaining about trucks coming in the neighborhood, eighteen wheelers coming in the neighborhood, tearing up roads and tearing down signs. It's a... Right, as it says, so this does not include the municipal authorities. Is that right, Mr. Minister?
Yes, I'm glad it's correct.
Thank you, sir.
And the other? Could I give a couple more?
Thank you.
And a second, first reading by title only.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair. Second.
Second by Lawrence Frazier, second by Ms. Walker. First reading on this ordinance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and no one's here. Item four is also first reading ordinance, and this is the ordinance authorizing the county of Orangeburg to enter into the seventh lease renewal agreement regarding a portion of the Pleasant Square Shopping Center, to which Orangeburg County shall be the tenant, and the Brian Investment Corporation shall be the landlord. Mr. Minister, for public... All right, yeah, this is, um, 1,206, uh, square feet of rental space that the, uh, agricultural building at 1550 Henley. And it will be in monthly installments of $864.25.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. If you've heard the summary of it, uh, full of public hearing, if anybody have any comments on that. All right. Not, I would appreciate it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. By Mr. Gordon, second by Ms. Frasier, that they have third final reading on item one. All in favor, please.
Aye.
And opposed, eyes have a motion here. Second item on the agenda is a second reading. This is, um, for the consideration of request from, um, Michelle Jameson, whose property at 1287 Campus Drive in Orangeburg. Backing up number 0173-1201-077. From residential general district to commercial general district. Uh, Mr. Minister, the public, if you want to give a summary on that, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Plan commission now on February 12, 2025, to discuss the recommendations from Ms. Jameson. Uh, it's only 1287 Campus Drive. And it's for residential general to commercial general for the purpose of running of, of business with food trucks and bars. Uh, there were three citizens that expressed their support, zero citizens with opposition. Plan commission presents this to you with a five to zero approval.
Thank you, Mr. Minister. Do they have any questions from, uh, any council persons? Because I did a motion on the second.
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
By Ms. Frasier, second by Ms. Walker, that we do second reading. Item two, as described by the administrator, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, eyes have a motion here. Third item is an audit for first reading, and this is by title only. And this is an audit for restricted parking in residential single-family zones in the un-operated portion of Orangeburg County or de- hit over capacity greater than two tons used for commercial, industrial, or construction purposes, providing for violation penalties and other related matters. Since it's by title only, uh, this administrator, we usually wait until we get second reading to give the full description, right? Usually when it's by title only, that means we create a second reading. We'll give a full description of what's required, so I mean, it's telling him what.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a, um, ordinance that we're putting in place to help curb the parking of, of commercial vehicles in residential areas. And the rest of the, uh, ordinance will be forthcoming. But the purpose of the ordinance is for the complaints that we have received from a lot of the communities about eighteen wheelers parking in the residential neighborhoods. And this would help give us the ability to take it and find those individuals to help give the citizens some relief.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Come on, that's question. Question? Right, question, Mr. Rabiner?
My question is this, um, Mr. Minister, we have a residence in place already that have, um, any covenant. The description for, if these are such, um, who's supposed to enforce that sheriff's department or who?
How it's being written, it's written so that code enforcement and sheriff's office will be able to enforce that.
Okay, but I'm, you heard what I said, um, some of the residents that already have a covenant. But I know this is that issue. That's great.
Yeah, but, um.
The government itself, a neighborhood that had a court support by the county. But this ordinance would be.
I wrote it that way.
Well, what about the current one that they have in place already?
The current one is under planning and zoning. That's why I did this with penalties and violations so that the sheriff's office and code enforcement will be able to take this one out.
As well as bill?
No, we don't focus on this one. Because we don't have anyone under zoning who can do penalties right now. So we doing this so that enforcement can be through the sheriff's office and code enforcement, citations.
That's great, but I still, of course, it still arrives, how we enforce one authority in place?
We can't. We don't have anyone current.
I'm saying that, but then we're, the sheriff's department has to do it. I understand this is a separate, um, covenant, other than one in place already.
It's the same, but it's separate, only because we don't have, um, people to do enforcement with. So we had to do it this way so that we can have the sheriff's office and code enforcement fight the violations.
And those will be incorporated as well?
It will be incorporated should someone be hired to code enforcement to fight the citations.
You know?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Miss Cooper Smith has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this has been a problem ever since I've been on council. People have been complaining about trucks coming in the neighborhood. Eighteen wheels coming in the neighborhood, tearing up roads and tearing down sun. So for Orangeburg, right, uh, that's it says, um, so this does not include the municipalities. Is that right, Mr. Minister?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. You know? Could I get a couple more seconds? Now, the second, first reading on title only.
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Okay, by Ms. Frasier, second by Ms. Walker. First reading on this ordinance, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have a motion. Item four is also, um, first reading, audience, and this is an audit authorized in the county of Orangeburg to enter into the seventh lease renewal agreement regarding a portion of the Chestnut Square Shopping Center, to which Orangeburg County shall be the tenant. And the buying investment corporation shall be the landlord. Mr. Minister, for a public summary of that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is an agreement that the, um, landlord, the Symbion Investment Corporation, um, this is the renewal agreement that we're using at the Chestnut Square property. And this property has been due by the sheriff's office since 2008. Um, this is just another renewal, which is a two-year renewal that we need, um, incorporate so that we can continue to do it until we, um, finish the facility that we are working on for the sheriff as we speak.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Jerry, now, could I get a motion on second?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gordon, second by Ms. Frasier, first that we lost this on first reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have a motion. Item five, um, it's an ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on application and processing for land users passive with class number 325315 of the North American Industry Classification System regarding sewer and animal waste compost manufacturing and related matters. Uh, Mr. Minister?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a update to the comprehensive plan, uh, to help add a, um, system in place for us to put a moratorium to, to further study. Uh, we know that we have one located in Orangeburg County now. And there are some issues that we're having where the citizens are complaining in relation to this mail. This moratorium will give us time to make sure that we have no other located until we can find and do a study to help make sure that the accommodations that they put in place will not affect the community negatively. And this is a moratorium that is for a period of eleven calendar months. And that time will be looked at after we complete the study.
Thank you so much, Mr. Minister. Any questions? Jerry, now, could I get a motion in a second for first reading on this ordinance, please?
So move first reading.
Second.
Move by Mr. Gordon, second by Ms. Frasier, for first reading on the ordinance, as explained by the administrator. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I just want to make them clear, this is, this is just a study. I just want to make sure what I'm voting on.
Oh, this is more than study. That's what I'm working on. I put a bridge on it.
All right.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have a motion, Chair. Thank you so much. Item six is a resolution, uh, and this is Women's History Month. Uh, Miss Cooper Smith, you got to read that first or, or do you want me to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. State of South Carolina, County of Orangeburg, Resolution sponsored by Jenny Cooper Smith, District Five, honoring National Women's History Month. Whereas before the 1960s and 70s, women had, women had no rights. Women's history was one time neglected in all areas. Healthcare, sports, business, education government, public service, law of the arts, military, and all other areas. And whereas in 1978, it's the Northern California School District sponsored a Women's History Week to promote the teaching of women's history in its schools. And whereas National Women's History Month began as a single week and as a local event. And whereas Congress passed a resolution making a week a national celebration in 1981. Whereas a group of women campaigned with representative, with representatives from schools, libraries, and museums to expand the celebration to a full month. And Congress approved in 1987. And whereas the month of March is to pay tribute to women of every ethnic background, raised and classed in America, whose commitment to nature and, and the planet have proved invaluable. And whereas since 1995, every sitting president has, has, has issued a series of annual proclamations designating the month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas the 2025 theme for National Women's History Month is moving forward to give women educating and inspiring generations. And whereas women are a star in practically every area as men. Women are astronauts, presidential candidates, Supreme Court justices, governors, college presidents, airplane pilots, CEOs of multimillion dollar companies, entrepreneurs, school superintendents, wellness, medical doctors, carpenters, auto mechanics, lawyer, athletes, and vice president of the United States. And the list goes on. Now therefore being resolved, the 17th day of March 2025, that Orangeburg County Council recognizes, uh, for the team that's made by women of the past, the present, and their pioneer in the future. Be it further resolved to 17th day of March 2025, uh, called that this resolution shall be spread across the footprint written records of Orangeburg County. Iceberg County Council Chair Yonder, right, District One. Council, Councilwoman Jenny Cooper Smith, District Five, uh, Chair, Callum fourteen, for the council. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Smith. Um, Cooper Smith, when you read that, at this time, could you, please, make a motion that we have had, Ms. Smith?
I make a motion that you expect to pass this resolution honoring National Women's History Month.
I get a second. Second. Move by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Ms. Laura Frasier, that we have the resolution and we have led by Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Eyes have a motion, Chair. Next item on the agenda is a vote for executive session. And this is an economic development update. This should allow, um, SE Code thirty dash four dash seven. There's a discussion of matters relating to, uh, the proposed location of expansion of provision of services encouraging the location of national industries, uh, in other businesses. And it is allowed under that code. And, um, this project name is Project Rhino. And the project, um, we want to say stay anonymous until they reach a certain point. And then they will let you know all the details at that time. But this time, we, um, a motion in a second to go into executive session to, uh, receive an update on this project.
So move, Mr. Chair. Second.
Move by Mr. Rabiner and second by Mr. Caster, that we go into executive session to, you know, update on Project Rhino. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? Eyes have a, the motion is care. Um, before we vote for adjournment, do we have any comments from any council person personally in our staff?
Yes, sir. I just want to acknowledge the, um, social work students who are present today from the Social Warfare Policy and Services Class at South Carolina State University.
Am I standing, please? If this, uh, if this are ladies?
Do your council members.
Same thing.
Uh, well, you know, men involved.
Do your council members.
The, the men said they'll be here actually.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, they're going to be generally, okay, that's all right.
It's Women's History Month.
Oh, okay. Welcome to council meeting. Glad that you came and hope and pray that you guys have experienced one. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have an announcement to make. Um, I'm going to read it from the paper. Says, you're invited. Please join the Palmetto Palace's Mobile Health Unit in partnership with MUSC Health, Orangeburg, for a special community meet and greet. Free hamburgers and hot dogs, drinks, and entertainment on site. Mobile Health Unit tours. Meet some of the Mobile Health Unit's teammates. Grab the whole family and join us on March the 22nd, 2025, that Saturday coming, um, from 11:00 AM to 2:00. And it's at the former Revlon Elementary School. And that's our Estill Drive Community Center. And you're welcome. Gilda Cobb's will be there. And Congressman Clive on the sheer media, if he could put it in his schedule, he owe me one, he'll be there. So please come on Saturday, March the 22nd, at the former Revlon Elementary School, which is our new Estill Drive Community Center. Yeah, 350 Thomas P. E. Cleveland Circle. The E. Cleveland Circle, Orangeburg, South Carolina, 99115.
Any other person in town?
Yes, um, as the chairman of Mr. Free, I think I, I hope he would have stayed until a meeting was over. Uh, he have a issue on the road that I know about. But it's similar to that county versus state versus private property owner. Now, hate just make a comment on that without setting it further. But I'm sure Mr. Henry Summers and myself, uh, we'll probably meet on site and see what the real problem is and if anything we can do about it, we'll be trying hard to do it. I just wanted to say that to him, but he left already.
Well, I'd like to say something. I was on my way going to Columbia and I did not know. I think it's Burke Road up in the north area was blocked off. And I had to turn all the way back around and come back. And I was shocked. Then I went down the Cannibes Road to some relatives and that road down there was blocked. And I'd like to know when are we going to get some of these roads repaired?
Can I get any other comments? This time, could I get a motion in a second or adjournment?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Move by Ms. Frasier, second by Ms. Walker, that we adjourn. Thank y'all for attending our meeting tonight. Thanks, y'all, ladies and gentlemen.